Good evening. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting on a special night. We are having this on tonight rather than this coming Monday because several of us will be attending the National League of Cities Conference and a meeting with our congressmen and senators and asking them for a bunch of money to come back to the City of Fairhope. Several of us will be out Monday doing that. So, we welcome you all. If you'll all please rise. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend D. Freeman, Jr. He's a rector at Saint James Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in bow your head in prayer. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance of your gifts you've bestowed upon the people of this community, for the bounty of this city and the beautiful land in which it resides. Tonight, I come to you on behalf of this city seeking your blessings upon these elected officials, especially for our council persons and for our mayor. Be with them tonight collectively, giving them a spirit of wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Give them compassion to understand the needs of the people who live here and of one another. Give them a sense of your justice so that they may do what is good and right in your eyes. May a sense of peace and trust rest upon this place and upon this group here gathered. I pray that with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully and dutifully serve this city and move through the agenda set before them tonight, always working to promote the well-being of the city we love and the people for whom they serve with transparency, honesty, and dignity to the honor and glory of your holy name in which I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Freeman. Okay, first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, the agenda meetings that were held on February 23rd, and also the minutes of the specially called city council meeting held on February 27th. Do we have any additions, deletions, changes, amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor approving those minutes? No. Have a motion for that maybe?
So moved.
Hurry. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor now, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Mayor Wilson, your report please.
I have to say, I spent all of my time on the budget, so I have no comments except to say that I am looking forward to this weekend and the opening of the soccer complex. I know it's been anticipated, it's very exciting, and I'm just looking for opportunities to partner with you all more and have a more positive relationship so we can move the city forward, and we all want that.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to ask someone to make a motion to amend the agenda, ask you to make a motion to remove items 12 and 13, and also to move the public participation in front of the executive session. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to remove items 12 and 13, and to move the public participation at the end of the meeting up ahead of the executive session. Any further discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Next item is public participation. This would be related to agenda items only, that would be agenda items five through, I'm gonna call it 20, but it would be 18 now, and if you would, please come forward to state your name and address for the record. If you have any other comments that do not pertain to agenda items, I would ask you to wait for the additional public participation session at the end of the council meeting. So, I'll now open it up to public participation for agenda items.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kelly Hieby at Chariot Avenue here in Fairhope. On the agenda, it's actually the next item, item five. I don't quite understand the verbiage. What are we voting on with regards to the airport authority? I just don't understand it, sorry.
What it is, is the airport authority is trying to refinance their debt, and the city needs to secure that debt, so there is an agreement that has to be made between the three parties, the financial institutions, the city, and the airport authority to accomplish that.
Okay. How much would that be for? Do we know?
That's about seven and a half million dollars.
And then, will the airport authority be making those payments on that loan?
No, the city will be making those payments.
Okay. In addition to the 325,000 we're already doing on an interest?
Not in addition to.
It's part of that?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
In fact, if the payment is greater than 320,000, the city will only be giving 320,000.
Okay.
The difference will be made up by the airport authority.
Okay. I just couldn't connect those dots. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Don't make it easy on us tonight. Okay, seeing no one else for public participation on agenda items, I'll now close public participation on those items, and there will be another opportunity just prior to executive session for you to speak to the council. Council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes. How's everybody doing? First off, I want to apologize, I was late to the meeting. I think it's the second one I've been late to in a row, so don't start docking my pay, please. But, I wanted to echo something the mayor said about the soccer fields this weekend. The grand opening for our new soccer complex is open, but I don't want you to forget about our other sports in town. We also have the opening day for the Fairhope Youth Baseball, and I believe the girls softball also opens this Saturday as well. So, don't leave our other sports out. But I also want to talk about something more generally, and that is, over the last month or so, I've heard from a lot of people, and thank you for reaching out, even if you said something that was not so nice to me. Just kidding, they were all super friendly. But, you know, one of the most common themes from everybody that reaches out says, "We want there to be more civility between our administration," and I think we all agree with that. But one of the things that I would ask, and I'm kinda echoing something that Councilman Brown said a couple of weeks ago, is I see, we want to be more civil, and we expect to be or hope to be, but I'd like to ask for civility from our citizens as well. You know, we have, there's so much on social media now, and there's so much that goes around. I see some pretty nasty things being said about, you know, people that live in this community, people that have families in this community, childrens in this community, children in this community. And so you can disagree, nobody's perfect, nobody's right all the time. I've been wrong at least two or three times in the last 10 years. But, you know, just keep that in mind, and, you know, if you've got a problem, if you've got an issue, bring it to us. Bring it to the mayor, bring it to the council, and if you disagree with me, fine, but we can at least come to some understanding as to why I feel the way I do, and then why you disagree. You know, my goal is to always be reasonable. That's the way I see the world. You know, let's try to find some middle ground and some reason, and that's how I like to operate. A lot of people don't agree with that. But it doesn't mean I'm wrong, and it doesn't mean you're wrong. It just means we differ on the way we like to approach things. But I think if we take some time and listen to each other and try to find some middle ground, I think we can all move this thing forward and do it in the right way. So, remember our sports, no nasty emails, and thank you for your time.
Councilman Conyers?
Certainly. I want to echo Councilman Robinson's comments, appreciate that. I think a spirit of compromise is always important in public office. I'm also going to discuss a few things art-related. Of course, next weekend is Arts and Crafts Festival, but a couple of upcoming things here in the community. Bay Shore Christian School Theater Group is presenting the Wizard of Oz Musical. That's tomorrow, Friday, March 10th, and Saturday, March 11th, at the Christian Life Center at Fairhope United Methodist Church. Shows are at 6:00 PM. You can buy the tickets at the door, and then, next weekend, which will be Thursday, Saturday at 7:00 PM, and then Sunday matinee at 2:30, Fife is, in the Fife's Black Box Theater at Fairhope High School, the Fairhope High School Theater Department is gonna be presenting Les Misérables, which is fantastic, one of my favorites, and I'll be posting the information on where to get tickets on my Facebook page. And lastly, Spring Fever Chase is coming up a week from Saturday. If you want to come watch, me and my buddy, Lee Webb, sprint the last 200 yards to see who's buying lunch, come on out and support us. Thank you. I want to see that.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Again, I want to invite everybody out to the soccer complex, and I want to thank Tom Cool and his department for getting the fields into excellent shape they are. We had a little soft opening last weekend, and it really was a beautiful night out of the new complex with the fields lit up, the concession stand. Also, I want to thank the Fairhope Single Tax Colony for their partnership with the city to have that facility built. Again, invite everybody out for Arts and Crafts, and Spring Fever Chase deadline registration is tomorrow, so don't miss it. And I want to continue on the committee comment from the work session. Jack, email that the EAC received, this is from Brad Summersell. As you all know, the city made a $290,000 investment last summer implementing Scholastic's Guided Reading Program for the 2016-17 school year and beyond. We anticipate this will have a huge impact on our reading outcomes for years to come. I received the email below from Joyce Woodburn with some exciting news related to this investment. Please share as you see fit. Email from Joyce Woodburn, who is the Baldwin County Board of Education Curriculum Director. Email, "Good morning, Brad. I thought I'd let you know that the video is being produced about our guided reading initiative. Scholastic has generously offered to create this video for us free of charge. The video will be shown throughout the nation by Scholastic in an effort to showcase the guided reading program. J. Larry Newton School and Fairhope Elementary School will be featured in this video. You may want to share this information with your board members and the city council so they can see that their generous donation to the guided reading initiative are reaping great dividends. We'll be videoing next week. Scholastic teams will be using the video throughout the nation at conferences, school districts, et cetera. We're all so excited. Thanks, Joyce." So, there's the return on the investment with the schools.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Boone?
Actually, with everybody talking, I was gonna just say, well, in the interest of time, I'll give my comments to you. But I do want to welcome, make sure everybody comes to the Arts and Crafts Festival, because that's my favorite, since I was a kid, that was my favorite activity in this town ever put on, and we do need to support that completely, so thank you.
And I'll just, I won't say much either tonight, but I do echo that Arts and Crafts Festival is really, truly my favorite time of the year here, and although I do like all the lights on the trees, but the azaleas have peaked, I believe, right? And it looks like we might be a little in a downswing this next week, but they were beautiful. There were a lot of blooms this year, so looking forward to Arts and Crafts. I'm sorry I'm gonna miss youth baseball and softball, and also the soccer opening day this Saturday, as we'll be traveling on city business. So, good luck to all of you in that, and we'll move on to item five on the agenda, which is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Fairhope Airport Authority's Improvement Refunding Bond, Series 2017, and authorize Mayor Karen Wilson, the city treasurer, or any other officer of the city to execute, seal, attest, and deliver on behalf of the city the funding agreement and option agreement, et cetera, as may be necessary and appropriate in connection with the sale by the authority of the Series 2017 bond. Would somebody like to introduce that ordinance?
So moved.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Now, council, I would like to say that in the effort to save time so that we could get this taken care of before interest rates rise, if you want to pass this ordinance, we need to suspend with the rules, so I will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules.
Again, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We need to roll call on that, clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Call the question clerk?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. Will the council for the airport authority come give a brief description of this? Mr. Myrie? And Chairman of the airport authority, if you'd like to join him, either way.
Thank you, and as you mentioned, the proposal on the table is to refinance the existing airport authority debt that actually dates back to 2007, and that was refinanced in 2010. And in order to attempt to take advantage of the low interest rates that we have right now, the authority thought that it would be in the best interest to attempt to refinance the debt and try and take advantage of a fixed interest rate structure as opposed to the variable interest rate structure that is on the debt right now. And so, we have engaged bond counsel, who is Thomas Longino from Longino Public Finance in Birmingham, and he has drafted the documents that will serve to accomplish the refinance. This afternoon at 3:00, the authority convened its regular meeting and voted to approve the resolution, the funding agreement, and an option agreement that would serve to accomplish the refinance. Obviously, that's contingent upon approval from the city council, because the city plays an important role in financing that debt. And there are still some other, there still is other work to be done to accomplish this, which includes getting the required opinion letters from bond counsel for the city, and also from the lender, who is Bryant Bank, before the loan can be funded. So, that, in a nutshell, is where we are right now, and we'll be glad to answer any questions as best we can.
Counsel, just, I would like to throw, you know, just to highlight, I believe that the rate, if we close by the end of the month, will be 2.18 percent. That's fixed. There's no make-whole provision. There are no prepayment penalties, and that's a little bit of a misnumber, because if you pay it off, like, in the first year, I think you have to pay 103 percent, and the second year, 102, and then the third year would be 101, and then there's no payment penalty.
There's no, that would, it's sort of a-
But they don't call it a penalty.
A refinance penalty, if you will.
Right.
If the city decides to prepay it using municipal funds, or if property is sold-
Right.
-and the proceeds from that sale go to pay the principal on the loan, there's no penalty for that. The penalty only attaches if there is a refinance with a different bank during the first four years.
Right. So, basically, I should have said that all the sticking points have been eliminated.
A lot of the sticking points, a lot of people have been working really hard for a lot of, for a couple of weeks to get this to this point. We've still got some more work to do, but I think we can get it done.
Any questions, council? Thank you, gentlemen. Hearing no questions, would somebody like to take a motion for final adoption?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any final discussion? Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the submission of an FY 2018 Coastal Planning Grant to the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to develop a community education and outreach plan regarding non-point source pollution to help protect the city's watersheds, and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to sign all required grant application documents on behalf of the city. This is a 50-50 match of the total project cost estimate of $40,000. The city will match this with an in-kind contribution. Sherri Lee, you want to give a quick synopsis of this? Other than what's written, it's a pretty good synopsis on the resolution, I believe, there.
Yeah, this actually complements our BP Restore Act grant proposal, so this particular program is really to fund Medallion Stormwater Drainage Program, and it'll be partnered with an educational outreach program to teach people, our community and our kids, actually more about stormwater runoff and the environment.
Can we use it to fix Church Avenue?
I bet they would like that. We would like that. No, but it does complement, you know, our BP Restore Act if we do get that funding for the waterfront working restoration project, so it's a nice addition to that project, should we get funded.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Would this be something under the new department, I mean, this program?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions? Okay, would somebody like to entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, authorizing the submission of the grant. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item number seven is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Volker for professional engineering services for ALDOT Project BP-002-282-011, and you can read all those other numbers for yourself, along State Road 181, additional lanes from State Road 104 to County Road 64 in Baldwin County, hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate the fee schedule and sign all necessary and appropriate documents required by ALDOT for this project. Mr. Ames? Correct me if I'm wrong, as you're coming to the podium, that we will pay for these services and them be reimbursed?
Correct. Mr. Tim Patton from Volker is also here, if you have questions for the engineer. This is for a piece of this, they're widening 181 from 64 down to 104, and our part is to move the utilities over. We are on the side, looking at this sort of as a partner on the side. Volker and ALDOT will do 99.99 percent of what we need done. We will tell them what we need done, in the fashion we need one done, and then they'll make it happen. This is a good one. And ALDOT, I've spoken with ALDOT's rep, they are completely comfortable with Volker, completely comfortable with Volker, and this is just housekeeping for us.
Any questions for Mr. Ames or Mr. Patton, who's here with Volker? Okay, hearing no questions, will somebody entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute this?
So moved.
Or prove, I'm sorry, to approve the selection of this?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the selection, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Goodwin Mills in Kewood to provide an engineer of record services for RFQ number PS013-17 Professional Engineering Capacity Study for Gas, Water, and Sewer Utilities, Phase One, with a not-to-exceed amount of $40,000. Does anybody need any introduction as to what this is? We've been talking about this for some time. If so, I'll get Mr. Ames back up here to explain what this is about. We don't need that, do we? I see you grinning. You want to make a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to select this, execute this contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution that the City of Fairhope, in order to release any rights it has in those utility easements shown on the plat of Bella Forsta, recorded at Slide 2305-E, Baldwin County, Alabama, as being on either side of the street or alleys where the subject of that certain declaration of vacation, recorded as instrument number 1511790, be declared surplus as referenced and attached as Exhibit A, and that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a quitclaim deed from the City of Fairhope to Paragon Development Group. And that's number one. Number two, Ward Management LLC for the aforementioned utility easements.
It's my saying, this is a vacated plat, a vacated plat, and they're wanting to build, I believe, one or two houses on this property, and the easements are no longer needed, and it does interfere with their development of the property with a one or two lot homes there. But the plat has been vacated, but the easements are still shown, because they were not vacated.
This is identical to what we did in the last council meeting, where we had the easement and went through the center of the lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there easements that run along other boundaries on the lot, then?
I'm not sure about that, Councilman. This kind of came, when I first got here, this was brought up to me by an interested party, and so we researched that and found that it was vacated and set for the easements for the utilities.
Do those run through the Planning Commission for approval, or do they come straight to the council?
I think they come straight to the council, they're utility easements, and I don't think that-
But you would recommend approval of this?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Okay. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Dias? Okay, would somebody like to entertain a motion to release any rights for those utility easements?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number 10 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a temporary construction and access easement between the City of Fairhope, a municipal corporation and Citizens Bank, a corporation for purposes incidental to the city's sidewalk and drainage improvement project in, upon, over, under, and across that certain real property described in the easement. Wayne? Similar situation?
No.
Yes, sir.
I talked to- This would just be a temporary construction?
Yes, sir, it would be. I talked to Arthur Bossard, he said they are doing some subtle repair, and this is just a simple easement to cross that while they're doing the repairs.
Any questions for Wayne? Hearing none, ask for a motion to authorize the temporary construction.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item number 11 is a resolution accepting the public streets, public right-ofways, and all of Fairhope's public utilities located in public right-ofways within nature trail, Phase Two, for maintenance, and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and Smart Living LLC. Standard procedure here, clerk?
Yes, sir, it is. We have checked on, we have verified, they've met all the conditions, everything's been in place, and everybody signed off on that, and it is good, it's good to be, good to go and be accepted.
Any questions for Mr. Dias, council? Not all, entertain a motion, pass this resolution?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Right-ofways and utilities are accepted. Thank you, council. Items number 12 and 13 were removed from the agenda. Item 14 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope accepts and approves the proposed name of Gully Lane pursuant to the city's road name change petition at the request of Julie Wilkins, owner of Lot 7 of the unnamed road off Maple Street.
And I've confirmed that the Number One Board has approved this name change, and we also recommend approval.
Any questions for Wayne? I can say this is the first of these that I've seen in four-plus years. Somebody like to entertain a motion to accept and approve the name?
So moved. Second. You're gonna have to hustle up, boys.
What's that?
You're gonna have to hustle up on approving, getting these motions approved, huh?
I hear you, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Councilman Boone's giving me a hard time for being on item 15 after 29 minutes. Okay, item number 15 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute the agreement with the Baldwin County Board of Education regarding the city's donation of $342,089 to the board for use by the five schools in Fairhope, is to be used strictly in conformance with the approval list recommended by the Fairhope Education Advisory Committee. Councilman Brown, would you give us a quick description of this?
Yeah, this is the money that was in the community development appropriations. The EAC met with the principals, and they came up with their list of what they'd like the funding to be used for. That list was sent to the Baldwin County Board of Education, and they agreed with what they were requesting. There's $158,000 that is for conferences and other non-personnel items, and 184 is personnel items that will be used for the school year 17-18. the school year seventeen eighteen.
Councilman Brown, I have one question. We, we spent a fair amount of money to perform a study, was known as the Acrivose Study. Is this in, in agreement with what the conclusions for that study were telling us that we need to spend our money on?
Yes, it's in alignment. The, like I said, the personnel group is all reading coaches and intervention personnel, so professional development, as well as the conferences attended, so the small portion is for non-personnel smart boards.
It took, it took a little bit of convincing to get used to that professional development. That was a changing course from probably four years prior when we didn't want to pay for professional development, but the study came back pretty clear that we should, if we wanted to improve the schools, include that. So anyway, any questions for Councilman Brown? Hearing none, will somebody make the motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes, thank you counsel. Item number sixteen is a resolution that the governing body hereby expressly excludes from the hiring freeze and authorizes filling the following position, the authorized full-time city planner. And I will say that this was an oversight in the hiring freeze and asked the council to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes, thank you counsel. Item number seventeen is a request from Casey Callaway, a Mobile Baykeeper, requesting permission to block the streets and use the park on the south end of Pier North Beach Road, Bayfront Park, and Fountain Area for the two thousand and seventeen Publics Grand Man Triathlon on June the third, two thousand and seventeen. On June the second, to close the Rose Garden no later than six P.M., and on June the third, to close the road entering North Bayfront Park from five A.M. until the last racer finishes, use of barricades, and permission to serve beer on South Beach Park with the all-appropriate security after race pending A B C approval, and the city's alcoholic beverage application approval.
So moved.
A motion to approve the request, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Chief Pettis, I have a question. So they will be paying for the security, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions on that? Okay. Have a motion and a second, all those in favor of granting the request, please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. Thank you counsel. Item number eighteen is a request to authorize payment of hand-to-hand invoices from November and December, which total twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, ten dollars and ten cents. This was a, I put this on the agenda, I think we need to get these attorneys paid, and I don't think there's any way around this. We owe them for this work that was done. It was having to do with some, the transition from hand-to-hand to Jones Walker's firm, and getting them up to speed, and I think maybe a handful of other items, just some outstanding invoices. So I ask you to approve this so that we can get them paid. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the payment.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, payment is authorized. Item number nineteen, airport authority appointments. You see the, if you turn in your binder back there, in the back of the first page, there are three. There's the expiring term of Pam Cordell. The mayor's nomination is Christine Kiernan. There is expiring Vince Booth. The mayor's nomination is Blake Waller, and expiring Tom Scheck. And I'll also say, he's actually resigned, he is no longer on the authority to be replaced by, from Mayor Wilson's nominations by Mr. William Bruce. Now, I would like to say, at this time, if I may, out of respect to you, Mayor Wilson, and your nominations, that the airport authority passed a recommendation earlier tonight to ask you to nominate the two people who would like to remain on that airport authority, and that is Pam Cordell and Vince Booth. They would like to continue serving, Pam's term expires, her six-year term. Mr. Booth has served about a year and a half of a vacancy that was filled by someone that resigned about a year and a half ago. The, I would ask you to consider, and, oh, let me back up and say that all of these nominations that Mayor Wilson has made have extremely, extremely impressive resumes, and I, for one, do not mean to offend them at all, but I, being on the airport authority, have seen the dedication of the two people that wish to continue on the authority, would ask you to consider their nominations, Mayor Wilson. They have endured a lot, there has been a lot of false accusations made about the airport authority over the last few months, and I take offense to them, and I think that they have, they are volunteers who have spent their time serving this city, and they want to consider, continue serving this city. And those other nominations that you have made, I would love to entertain them, and I'm talking about Ms. Kiernan and Mr. Waller, because Mr. Scheck is, he did resign. So only talking about the first two, and would ask that maybe they be considered when there's another opening on the airport authority. I would love to have them at that time, but just for me personally, I would ask you to reconsider, and I do not mean to offend those people, or you.
As mayor, I nominate the new board members, and the council approves. These are my appointments, and like a new administration being voted in, and the majority of councilmen being voted in this year, I think the citizens have spoken, and they do want fresh eyes and more opportunity for citizens. The council has had these applicants for some time now, I hope that y'all have had an opportunity to talk to them or meet them. And Bruce Williams, he's moved here seventeen years ago, where he has been involved in business sales, mergers, and acquisitions. He has been a pilot since he was sixteen, on his sixteenth birthday, when he shooed some cows out of a pasture on his family farm and took off in a piper cub. He has been active in civic business affairs all of his life, and enjoys the dynamic lifestyle of Fairhope, and looks forward to continued involvement in the unique place he calls home. He has an extensive background in economic development. Kristy Kiernan, she is an exemplary citizen. She has a PhD in aviation. She is a pilot with Falcon Twenty. She has twelve years Coast Guard Aviator Flying, and twelve years adjunct Assistant Professor. She's had twenty-two hundred hours of flying, I'm sure it's more since this application has started. She is an excellent citizen, she cares about Fairhope, and she has been very community-minded for a very long time. Colonel Blake Waller, he is also a Combat, Combat Air Forces Chair to Air University, and a department leader and warfighting instructor on faculty at the Air War College. He is a graduate of the U.S. Air Force Academy with a bachelor's science degree and Russian language minor, and he, again, is a colonel. He lives here in Fairhope, and he also put together a little strategic plan that he has already put together. He is, he would be a huge asset to serve on the airport authority board. He obviously has a lot of experience, and he's just a great, great guy. I have three brand-new appointments, again, council does have to approve or deny the appointments that I recommend, and based on these recommendations, and no offense to anybody that's been serving, I appreciate all service from, from all volunteers. But I'd also want three people that I can work with closely, because I will be taking a big part at the airport authority, and citizens that I know not only want to serve and do what's best for the airport, but also what is best for the city. And that's very important to me, and these three applicants, I spent a long time interviewing a lot of applicants, these are the three I've chosen.
Thank you, mayor. Let's do these one at a time. I would ask you to maybe just do these in reverse order, because there is an opening, and so I would say, do we have a motion to appoint William Bruce to the expiring term of Tom Scheck?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. William Bruce to fill the vacated seat of Mr. Tom Scheck. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. Mr. Bruce is appointed, thank you counsel. On the nomination of Christine Kiernan, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Christine Kiernan to fill the expiring term of Pam Cordell.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. You got a hand? How many nays were there?
Three.
Three nays? Okay. Appointment fails, thank you counsel. On the expiring term of Vince Booth, and the nomination of Mr., Colonel, I'm sorry, Colonel Blake Waller, I'll entertain a motion-
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I will say that Mr. Booth, he is a part-owner of FBO, he is the owner, or part-owner, in two flight schools, I think there may only be three in South Alabama, and he owns our portion of two of them. He is also heavily involved in the East Side Expansion Project, being a contractor, he has extensive knowledge in that. He is only, he's only served for a year and a half, and once again, I was very impressed with Colonel Waller's resume, I truly was. I just would like to give Mr. Booth more opportunity or something. Any further discussion?
Yes, there is. These appointments, like I said, are the ones that I want, and the ones that you have the ability to either deny or approve, but I'm not reappointing those two appointments. And I think that this is-
According to the law, that they would remain on there.
But again, and I'm saying this in front of the citizens, as my, as my witness, I know that there's a lot of people here that are concerned about the airport, and there's a huge debt on it that we want to take care of, and you are hopefully, you know, going to look at, to see how they vote, because these are exemplary applicants.
No doubt.
There's no reason to deny these people to serve, they want to serve, okay? And again, what is happening is council trying to infringe on the mayor's authority.
Well, mayor, if we, and first of all, you're infringing on our authority, because this is council discussion now, and I, we have a motion and a second on the table, and you gave a very good description of these people, and nobody questions their qualifications. I know they want to serve, as do the people that are currently on there, and, you know, the concerns about the airport authority, let me tell you, people, these are, these are not valid concerns, there's nothing going on with this airport. All this stuff that you're reading on social media is a bunch of bunk. I'm telling you right now, this airport authority is highly respected throughout the state of Alabama, they have done nothing but good for this city, they have spent their time admirably serving on this committee, and anybody else that says anything different, I personally take offense to it, as they do. It has been well-run, well-operated, and Mr. Waller could definitely, he may be a fantastic contributor, I have no doubt that he would. I'm just asking you to support people that have, you know, served, you know, you know, admirably on this committee. So anyway, anybody, any other council members have any comments?
I do, I just wanted to say that I did take the time to call all three of the mayor's nominations, they're all qualified, solid individuals. I know Mr. Booth, I know he's qualified. I've reviewed Ms. Cordell's resume, she's qualified. We have, basically, the mayor's presented three people that are qualified, there are two individuals that are currently serving that would like to re-up, they're qualified. We have five people that are highly qualified, there are three slots. I would like to see some kind of compromise and attempt to meet in the middle, and maybe say, two of the mayors and one of, one of the existing to hold over, and I think the main reason for that is that the, the members of the airport authority, they're unpaid volunteers, and they have really had their names kind of drug through the mud unfairly, I feel like, the last few months, and they've put in a lot of hours out there, and just imagine, for those of y'all that are also serving on different volunteer organizations, it's, it would be hard to imagine taking some of the heat that they've taken, that, you know, if you want to criticize them and say that they, they could do a better job, I mean, that's fine, you can criticize them for that, but they've taken an unprecedented amount of blame and shame in public for, for no real fair reason. But I would like to see something a little more in the middle of the line, and I would say, hey, if we've got two people that are wanting to re-up, maybe one of them stays, and we've got three nominations from the mayor, maybe we can pick two and, and call it an even compromise, that's just my suggestion.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Doniers. Any other comments?
Yeah, you know, you're looking at this, you've got five people that want to serve. It's not picking favorites, it's not picking sides. I mean, these are five citizens that are willing to volunteer their time and their service to this community. And so it's a difficult thing to sit up here and say, I want to pick one over the next, and turn one down. I mean, this is, somebody that's asking to volunteer their service, and it's just a difficult, it's a difficult thing to do, to look somebody in the face and say, no thanks, we don't want your service.
Again, these are my appointments. I'm just going to say this quickly, and they can approve, if they don't approve, then I bring another option. Why would you bring another option when you can't get any better than this? My decision was not to reappoint these two. As far as, you know, names being dragged in the mud, Vince has dragged my name in the mud, you know, and Pam has been extremely rude to me, not one that has wanted to work with me, and so as long as you're talking about the details, I'm just letting you know, I want to work with the airport, I want to bring great things to this airport, our citizens do too, because they're paying what makes up the twenty-one percent of our debt for this airport.
Mayor, we're going to have to end the discussion, we've got-
So I'm going to absolutely say that this is another reason, another example of the council not working with me.
It's a, it's a two-way street, mayor. Respectfully, this is a council decision, we are here to vote. You made the nomination, not the appointment, the council makes the appointment based on a vote. You didn't, we, we respect your nominations, we did, they're good people, there's no doubt. You know, the council does have a vote on this, and so, do we have any other discussion from the council? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and the motion was to approve Blake Waller in the expiring term of Vince Booth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Nays have it. Thank you, counsel, I know that was very difficult. It was very difficult for me. Public participation, if you have anything to bring forth before the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Charlotte Buzzegard, I live, my address, seven-five-five Michigan Avenue, in beautiful Fairhope, Alabama, where God himself lives.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wilson, councilmen and women. First of all, I want to, I took, I wrote down what I wanted to say to make sure that I say everything. Thank each and every single one of you for your public service. Thank each and every single one of you for your public service. Scripture says, you know, that God appoints people to positions of leadership, and I've been praying for you guys, so thank you so much for your public service. First of all, I implore all of you regarding each and every decision that you ever make to always come from a position of love for Fairhope and for its citizens, and to always do what is best and the right thing to do for Fairhope and its beautiful people. And with all due respect, you know, I've hired people, fired people. I always look for the best qualified people for positions in any, I mean, and certainly, yeah, when people want to volunteer, you want to take on, I wish you could have all five, you know. But when you have someone who's new in office, usually they want to bring on the people that they want to bring on, and they should be allowed to do that. So I don't, I don't know why, I don't know, you know, I would look at those people that you guys want to keep on, and again, her applicants which you have, and go with the best qualified people. The resumes she just ran off, I want to compare it to the resumes of the two people that you want to keep on. You should just come at it from that perspective, not from any other perspective than who can truly do the best job for the airport, on the Airport Authority Board. And again, always please come from a position, you know, of love and what's best for the citizens. Now, hasn't a precedent already been set? I was just doing some research, back in 2011, I ran across an article on AL.com, and it says that in the state of Alabama, mayors alone have the power to hire, fire, and discipline municipal employees. Mayors alone have the power to hire, fire, and discipline municipal employees. In fact, those duties can't even be delegated to department heads. So it encourages you to read the article from AL.com, that was in July 2011, titled, "Fairhope Mayor Tim Cant Says Alabama Court Decisions Means He'll Personally Be Active in All Personal Issues." To me, this article says that the mayor does have the right to hire and fire and appoint who they want for positions, and council cannot overrule. I would research this article, I'm not an attorney, so, but this was a very interesting article that I just came across. Again, that's from 2011, July 2011, AL.com, and the article titled what I just referenced, "Fairhope Mayor Tim Cant Says Alabama Court Decisions Means He'll Be Active in All Personal Issues." They were also referencing another mayor in another state, how he was in disagreement with the council. He was trying to hire personnel for certain positions. The council came against him, but the mayor, again, ultimately had the right and was the sole person to hire, fire, and discipline municipal employees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I just want to say for the record, we didn't hire or fire anybody. We did not do that.
Well, she's trying to-
We instituted a hiring freeze, and we have five attorneys, including the executive director of the Alabama League of Municipalities, including the lead counsel for the Alabama League of Municipalities, that upheld that that was a lawful resolution.
So what, with all due respect, what is your purpose for the hiring freeze?
We want to evaluate the budget. We, you know, we see salaries increasing by $600,000. We want to evaluate whether or not those, we also create the positions, do we need to change the definitions of those? And also, the, the council has the appointing authority for five employees, the city judge, the city attorney, the police chief, the treasurer, and the city clerk. And also, there's provisions in the code that have been clarified since that decision came out, that we could also make other positions, appointed positions. So it's not an all or nothing on that. But, but once again, I just want to say that we instituted a hiring freeze. We hired no one and we fired no one.
So, but isn't it the council's job to work with the mayor to ensure the best possible success for Fairhope?
Yes, it's also the, the mayor's job to work with the council. In a strong council, weak mayor form of government, we make policy, procedure, create the positions, fund the positions. We take care of all the real estate of the city, and we also take care of all the finances of the city.
Did you read the article in this week's Lanyup? Because Ben, all the facts about the airport, I just read it yesterday. It seems you would want as much transparency as possible, because Ray Hicks, I don't know who this gentleman is, but to me, I would want to know who appointed him to the Airport Authority Board back in 2015, and then in a year and a half later, he wins the hangar build-out contract? And then he owns the company along with another attorney that's actually building the hangar? A child can see that's not right. There's some improprieties there. There's some improprieties there.
I'm going to say something on behalf of Mr. Hicks. He's a, he is a quality-
I don't know him, like I said, I don't-
Which is why I'm speaking up for him. He's a quality, solid individual, and people are getting his winning of this hangar bid out of, out of prospect. He's not making money. This is not a money-making venture. He won a bid because he's paying the most money to build a hangar on the airport's property that after 20, 25 years, 30 years, becomes the city's property.
But he owns the company that's building the hangar. He is co-owner with an attorney who owns-
Hames Snedeker, right?
Yeah, let me, let me just-
But they're not making money from doing this. They own a construction company.
They own Bay, Bay Air LLC.
Correct.
Okay, which bills hangars for, well, I would understand around, which bills hangars, right?
I think it's just an LLC. They formed to own that one hangar and operate aircrafts.
No, not, wow.
Well, according to Lanyup, I'm sure they interviewed Ray and Hames.
And I, I respect this reporter here, I think she just-
They own a construction company.
They do.
I just think there's something fishy going on.
Let me, can I just interrupt you for one second? I know it's rude, and I apologize. Let's, let's don't, I mean, I'm echoing my previous comments on civility. Let's not bring up the name of private citizens and slander them and call them out and call them names in this meeting without, I mean, I understand you don't know them, you're reading an article, and I get that you're commenting on that, but let's leave their names out. Let's try to do this in a way that everybody, we show everybody some, give everybody their dignity and their, and the respect that I think they deserve.
Yes, I do, yeah. I'm just, yes.
I'm just asking us to leave out the names if we can.
But wouldn't you want to start, wouldn't you want to start with a clean slate? You have a new mayor, you know, you had, we had the same mayor in position for 14 years. Wouldn't you want to start with, with a clean slate with this position, and how much money and revenue this can generate for Fairhope, that the airport? Wouldn't you want to be totally transparent with the airport because of the press that's out there? And I do apologize, yes, I should not. But wouldn't you want to be as completely transparent-
It is completely transparent.
-as possible?
All of our meetings are held in public, the RFP process, everything was done-
I can't find the RFP. The RFP's supposed to be public, I can't find it. I'm very familiar with RFPs, I cannot find the original RFP. It's, I don't know where that is.
It was about as above board as it could possibly be. We don't even have to put out RFPs as an airport authority. We don't even have to put out RFPs. We could have just negotiated with them, but we put out RFPs.
Really?
Did you know that?
I didn't know, it did not have to be public knowledge. I thought it had to be public knowledge, yeah. Because usually RFPs are, are public knowledge. Anyway, I would just, again, always please just come from a position, like, set of love, that's all I can say, and what's best and, and fair for Fairhope. And I would want the best, most qualified people on the Airport Authority Board. That was my point. Great, you want volunteers, but look at the resumes again, and please reconsider.
I would, I would try to get you theirs, they're quite impressive. There, there's no doubt they had those other nominees had great, great resumes. Okay, anyone else? Hold on, hold on, there's a lady coming up. Oh, get to you next. You didn't see her coming up from behind there.
I'm Ann, I'm Ann Nix. I guess everyone really knows me. I would like to say that I appreciate what the council has been doing, and thank you for being able to get a budget going. And also, I'd like to say, a lot of people do not know, and there's words going around, that the city emblem might be changed. My husband and the council with him made the city emblem for the city of Fairhope. And people do not really realize, but we have advertisement in Delta Magazine about Fairhope, Southern Living about Fairhope. We have a God's little country here. And people come here, and then they want to change it. Why do you want to change Fairhope? We have a beautiful town, and we have beautiful citizens. And these citizens love what my husband and the past mayor has done too, for Fairhope. And let's try to keep it like it is, don't change it. People don't like it. And I went into, oh, I went other day into the Nix Center, which they named it after my husband, and I was very disappointed. And in this newsletter, which comes out every month, the city emblem has been taken off of it. And I think that is a disgrace to the city of Fairhope. Thank you, and I appreciate you all, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda, and I'm from Fairhope. Been here 50-something years, and this is the first council meeting I've ever attended. It's Willie and I opened it.
This is boring tonight. This is the boring one, you know that?
I know, I read it. I don't read in the paper now, after, you know, what our country's going through, but I want to say I appreciate you offering the compromise that you did. You opened this meeting with having to have civility amongst people. And the God that I serve tells me that we have to compromise, and there's been no compromise in this. So my question is, when are you going to start compromising? You had a compromise offer tonight. I trust each one of you here. I appreciate each one of you being here, but I do have expectations that compromise is going to get our city to where it needs to be, because we're a wonderful city, and you're wonderful guys and girls that serve. So that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very well said. Thank you.
Sometimes.
Can I get your name and address for the-
Larry Wee, 623 Miller Street, M.I.D.D.L.E., Fayetteville, Alabama. I like to speak to the council. I pray that my speech is something that you have learned through your churches. We serve a God 24 hours a day. Or do we serve a God when we feel like it? Is right truly in our heart? Are we favoritism? Do we really respect the city of Fairhope? Do we really have love for the city of Fairhope? Because if you have love for the city of Fairhope, then the mayor is the executive of the city of Fairhope. Sometime it makes me feel, and I heard, and I will not give you the name, that Jack, you are trying to be mayor at being a city councilman. The election is coming up pretty soon. That's the time you need to be a Democrat, that's the time you need to be a Republican or independent. But when you're elected, you need to be a city councilman, you need to be a mayor. Because when you bring those to the table, nothing gets done. This thing has dripped down from Washington DC to here into Fairhope. It has. It's no different between what's going on right now in our great nation. Putin ain't going to have to destroy us, we're going to destroy ourselves. Yes, I love Fairhope. I liked what the other, before she spoke. But Fairhope must change, because if Fairhope don't change, then I continue to be treated the way I've been treated for the 62 years I've been here on earth. Thank you.
Thank you.
At Honorable Mayor, my name is Jay Harland. I live at 410 Wisteria Street. I'm going to dig up a can of worms, but just a small one right now. City government has been known, especially Fairhope, to be a pay-for-play. There has been corruption and people who have profited from the positions all of you hold now. Hopefully, the mandate from the voters have changed that. Ms. Wilson was elected because this people, Fairhope wanted change. And many of the new council members, you were elected because the city of Fairhope wanted change. They wanted change from neptitism, favoritism, contractors, developers, giving special preferences, and the bill being picked up by the city of Fairhope and its citizens. That's me. That's you. So now with this tradition of corruption, which we don't have now, I'm sure, you put a freeze on the mayor, on her hiring. You've taken the CEO of this corporation, and you've bound her. She cannot operate as the CEO should. Now you say it's because of, oh, we got some budget stuff, you know? And I don't buy that for a second. Now, if this mayor is going to succeed or fail and take the mandate she's been given by the voters, we need to let her do that. If she fails, it's the way it goes. I've made some bad decisions, I've failed with some in my hiring, I've succeeded with some. But it looks bad, for lack of a better word, when you shackle the mayor and politics continues as it has always continued in this town. I would like to see a change, and I would like to see the appearance, may not be true, but it appears like the good old boy system is alive and well. And especially you new members of the board, you know, you were elected under the same mandate. You know, let the mayor hire and fire as she wills. She makes a mistake, so be it. The voters will have another opportunity. But it's a choice we made, and it's a choice that you are shackling. And you have to ask yourself, am I part of the solution? Am I part of the problem? Or am I just protecting selfish interests? Respectfully, thank you for your time.
I'm Ron Allen, 6612 Willow Bridge Drive, Point Clear Stables. And I wasn't going to speak. I'm friends of Karen, I'm friends of Jack. But based on what I've heard for the last several months, we got three new council members, all elected by the citizens of Fairhope. We got two re-elected council members elected by the citizens of Fairhope, and we have a mayor elected by the city of Fairhope. The same citizens elected all of you. And the citizens are somewhat split, as we know. Karen, I don't want, I wasn't going to say this, but I know you've been elected, I know you're trying your very best, I know you spend a lot of hours. But what I hear is that the council's against me, and I'm right. And I'd say to all of you, sometimes the council's right, and sometimes you're right. You're not always right, any of you. And I agree that with Mr. Con, it was Mr. Robinson, discuss some of these issues, resolve them, and let's quit fighting each other. It's, you're all working for the city, you all represent the citizens, you're all trying your very best, and I am not going to challenge one of you or another one when you're all trying to do your best. Just try to be reasonable and get this thing solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nancy Jennings. I've lived here 55 years. My family has lived here, my great-grandfather was one of the first 100 members that lived here. So I've been with Fairhope a long time, whether I lived here or whether we just came to visit. I love this town, and I don't like seeing it in a fight. I don't like seeing the fights between the council and the mayor. I was one of those citizens that voted. I appreciate, and I think I voted for most everybody sitting up there, so I don't have anything against anybody. But I really would appreciate it if you all would make a bigger effort to get along. I don't know who said it, but what I would like to hear, the credentials of the two people on the airport board, before y'all leave here tonight, to know why you voted down three highly qualified people, two highly qualified people. I mean, there's just no reason, unless they were absolutely fantastic, that they should be able to get those jobs back. And I really don't see why all of you can't grow up and get along. Sorry, I was a teacher for 34 years, and we just don't, we don't let you grow up. But you've got to learn to get along. You should have learned that in kindergarten. We just don't come in here and get things set up so that we have two and two, and the mayor makes the decision, and nobody listens to the- mayor makes the decision, and nobody listens to the mayor, excuse me, the president of the council. What are you, not the president? Okay. Makes the decision on something that he's already made up his mind on before he walked in the door because he is on the airport authority and he has worked with these other two people. I mean, I'm not faulting you for liking those people. I just want to know why.
Well, I would, you know, I would suggest, and I'm just, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but one of the ladies that was voted on the, on back onto the authority tonight is in the audience, and I don't feel like it's right to put her on the spot. I would say, Ms. Caudill over here, if you would like to speak to her about her qualifications, they are quite immense and they are quite impressive. And I think that you would be impressed if you talked to her. So, I mean, what I would rather do, maybe, rather than put her on the spot is, she's, raise your hand, Pam. And, you know, her resume is, I couldn't even recite it, I wish I had it here. It wasn't on the agenda, so I don't have her resume in front of me. And I don't want to start quoting all of her tens of years of experience with airports and to be boastful about her. There's no question that the people that didn't get those positions had very impressive resumes. And I said myself that I would welcome them on there when the opportunity exists. But I don't want to kick people off of volunteer boards in this city that have served in a great capacity. And I think even the people that were nominated would even agree to that, that they wouldn't want to be kicked off. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to be kicked off of the board. But I would encourage you to go talk to Ms. Caudill, if she's willing to stick around, get to know her, ask her her qualifications, because they are very impressive, very impressive. Would you be willing to stick around for that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I was real excited during the, I'm Sonia Bennett, I live on Magnolia Avenue. I was real excited during your work session. I actually felt harmony and unity, but it's dissolved again. I am for all of us in this town becoming unified. Otherwise, we look like our national government. This is a beautiful town, we're all blessed. There are many spiritual people sitting in this room, many up here on this stage. I voted for many of you. But I am so tired, I'm like Nancy Jennings. I am tired of the infighting and the bickering. Sometimes when you're new to the job and you're head of the job, you have the right to bring in your people. You would all want to do that if you were head of a corporation. But that's not even why I'm speaking. I'm speaking again for the disenfranchised people of this town that are suffering, that don't have what they need. If we were the town we're supposed to be, we would be worrying about those people and not fighting over these issues. I'm for unity for our town. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Bennett, I just want to ask you one question. You said there was, you said there was harmony in the work session. Are you blaming me because I missed the work session and then I got here?
Actually, I thought you added something when you came in.
Well, you know, that's, I knew I asked you a question for a reason. Thank you.
Real quick, if I could make a recommendation, if we could put, if we could post online the resumes of the appointees by the mayor and then the ones that are currently on the board and let the citizens just see? And would there be any way that the, that we can vote on that? Or that, that's not, okay. Okay. But just, just, well, I just, you know, just put personal differences aside, maybe you're best friends with the people that are on the board. But again, I would think you would allow, that was a great example, the CEO of a corporation. If I, if I, you know, go to work somewhere else, I want to bring people with me that have worked with me before. And if there's already people, you know, that's just, that's just a great analogy, that you want to be able to have as the CEO of this town, which the mayor is, you want to be able to have that right to bring in your own, your own people, didn't?
If we, if it had to be, if it was going to be that the state of Alabama had decided that the mayor would have the sole authority for appointing those people, they would have given her the sole appointing authority instead of the nominating authority, and the, and the council wouldn't have a vote. Why can't people respect the fact that the council has a vote and has a say? I mean, we, we are, we were elected by the citizens to have a say as well.
But there's already friction, as, as Mayor mentioned, with this respect.
I want to mention too that your approvals have to be on who I bring. You can't appoint people.
And just like the hiring freeze, nobody hired or fired anybody.
I'm, I'm talking about the airport authority.
And I, and like I said, just like that, we have full right to vote the way we did Dillon Law, or Dillon Rule. They gave us the ability through state statute to vote, and that's the way the vote went. And please respect the opinion of the council because that's the way the vote went. Nobody conspired. In fact, the votes went three to two, two different votes, were three to two.
You can't reappoint two people. I have to give you whoever, so if you don't want these two, I can do.
And we did not try to.
Then I, if I bring two more to the next, I mean, to what end? You're supposed to approve who I present.
Well, I think that.
Or disapprove. But you can't, you can't reappoint.
Can't stop you from keeping more nominations.
As a council.
Can't make, can't keep you from making more nominations. I don't think you're going to improve upon the nominations you have. They were wonderful nominations. But council spoke. Thank you, ma'am.
Again, so I'm going to pray for you guys every morning. Thank you so much.
We appreciate that.
Good evening.
Hey, Johnny.
My name is Johnny Chaney. And usually, I don't like a lot of bickering and going on, you know, but maybe, could this be a solution? Why don't you alternate all five of the people? And we just want unity, you know? We need a solution to these things, to when they get, or let the people, you know, try to help you with some kind of solution. It would be better just to alternate the positions with all five of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney.
Good evening. My name's John Manellis, I live at 104 White Avenue. I've lived in this beautiful city for the last four and a half years. And I'm just going to preface my comments with a story I think I've told you all before. When I moved here from Houston four and a half years ago, I looked at the trash collection route and I was confused. Put my trash out, day came by, they didn't pick it up. I called, actually got somebody, and told them that I may be confused, but my trash wasn't picked up today. And they said, no, it should have been, we're very sorry, and we'll, we'll have somebody come pick it up. And I said, no, that's okay, I just want to make sure I have the right day. I'll put it out the next day. Within probably two hours, and picked it up. Now, I moved from Houston, you wouldn't have even gotten through to talk to anybody. Here's the amazing part of the story to me. I got a call from the supervisor that afternoon apologizing. I nearly fell over. That's what makes this city so unique. God gave us this beautiful, beautiful place here. But my point of getting up here is this. You know what else makes this city unique? It's every one of these city workers that shows up to work here every day. And starting my career as a young man, as a Houston police officer, I was protected by civil service from politicians that may not like the way I look, may not like the way I voted. But I was protected by civil service. Our good city, our, our good employees of this city have, do not have that protection. Now, it isn't at-will state, I understand that. But these are city workers. Politicians are elected by us, but they come and go. We want continuity. Experience is good. Not all of experience is bad, Mayor. Experience is good. I don't know the two department heads that were let go. I've seen them in the city. They had a highly respected, in this community, dedicated employees, from what I can gather in my own eyes. That kind, what worries me is we will lose good city employees and continuity of what this city has made, been, what has made it so great. I think we're all for change, we're all for fresh eyes. I have questions about the airport authority. I don't know why we, we've, you know, we're involved in that, but we are. But I tell you what I would never do. I would never impugn the integrity of the people that serve, one of which is my neighbor, Pam Caudill, a former federal agent in the US government who retired with honor. She's my neighbor, I know her and her husband. I would never, ever impugn somebody's integrity unless I had the facts to back it up. And you, Jack Burrell, are what I believe to be a man of integrity. Your integrity has been impugned. Look, as has been stated here before, we can all disagree about the decisions, but let's keep it that way. If somebody has done something corrupt, as this gentleman just got up and said, fine, prove it. If you don't like what these folks are doing and you want to dishonor their integrity, then, then you better be able to back it up. I'm going to give the folks the benefit of the doubt, including the mayor and everyone here. Look, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't sign up for this for the money, you know that. That, that's a fact. I would never run for city councilor or mayor because of the headache that I'm seeing here. So I'm rambling on and on, but the point I wanted to make when I got up here is, please consider what this is doing to our city workers. Do you think any of our city workers here are concerned about keeping their job because they may have supported the prior mayor or concerned about the current mayor? I bet my bottom.
I am going to interject here.
I bet my bottom dollar that they are.
Because you don't know why these two city employees.
I didn't say I did.
I know. And since you don't, you can't get upset because if you did know, you would know that I had no other choice. If they sign an agreement that they're fine with me disclosing that, I'll get with my attorney and see what we can do.
I'm not.
But I can't, I can't do anything. But let me tell you, I stepped up to do this job, and I'm going to make decisions that are going to be unpopular. I'm not doing this to try to, you know, you're never going to make everybody happy. But the decisions that I make, I absolutely know are the right decisions.
Well, let me tell you.
And it's not about, it's my right or a power grab. You have to look up here and see who is doing the power grab.
It looks to me, and it looks to me and many of us that it is. I worked for 28 years in a large corporation, and the behavior that I've seen would probably not be tolerated in most major corporations. So that's all I want to say. My point was, please consider the hard-working city workers that show up every day for work and that will continue to show up, many of them, for the rest of their career, and how this is impacting them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Y'all are doing a great job. We need to get a term.
You know, I gotta, I gotta say this. We, we don't want to make this personal. We're all up here trying to do the best that we can. And again, there are going to be decisions that are made that we're not going to like, but we're all, we're all up here honestly trying to do the best that we can. We don't need to make this a personal vendetta. Thank you.
Anyone else who come to the podium?
Let's just change the line. Okay. Yes, sir.
Bobby Green, Maple Street, 60 years in Fairhope. It's kind of hard to say that. Yeah, I know. They all seem to end in zeros lately. I think early on, we saw the mayor offer an olive branch to you, and I see that it was accepted by Councilman Conyers, who had, I think, you had an excellent opportunity to compromise in that area and didn't pick up on that. It would have been a one-to-one.
Yes.
Situation. And, and Jack, did you mention that the legal opinion you had was regarding the hiring freeze was from the Alabama League of Municipalities?
I said it was from five lawyers. It was from two of our city attorneys, it was from another attorney, that Mr. McDonald in the front row that represents us, also from the Alabama League of Municipalities lead counsel, and also the executive director of the League of Municipalities, which is also, he is also an attorney.
Okay. Well, in reference to that, the Alabama Supreme Court decision came as a surprise to the League of Municipalities, and their deputy counsel at the time said, and I quote, "The decision certainly goes against the advice we have given for decades, that a council can take this authority for its own." And this was in 2011. And I don't think anything's changed during that period.
Mr. Green, I just, I just, all I want to say is, I don't disagree with you. We're not challenging that, that Supreme Court decision. It, we're not, we're talking apples and oranges. We instituted a hiring freeze. We didn't hire anybody, and we didn't fire anybody. And we didn't try to take that authority away from the mayor. We simply instituted a hiring freeze.
I under, I understand that, I respect that, but that's kind of parsing words in, in this. Tonight, the mayor brought to you three appointments, which are in effect hires. And you rejected both of the two that you could have compromised on at least one. That's all I have to say.
I felt, you know, I do want to address, if you don't mind, because, you know, you and I are friends, I do want to say that I felt like it would have been an affront to the people that were already serving in that capacity. Also remember that the reason that we have an authority is to take the politics out of it. Obviously, we haven't taken the politics out of it because it's become so political, it, it doesn't seem to have done what it was supposed to do. The reason we have an authority is to take the politics out of it. And, you know, you can't take, just like you don't want to take her nominating authority away, you can't take the right of the council to take a vote in any manner in which they want to vote, away from them either.
Right. I, I respect that. I know you have that legal right. I recognize the legal right, okay? I also know that you, being long-term member of the Fairhope Airport Authority, may have been able to influence one of the current members to step aside gracefully in this matter.
Step aside? What do you mean by that?
Step aside from their current position so that one or more of the mayor's nominees could have been approved this evening.
Mr. Scheck moved to Florida. I didn't tell him to move to Florida.
Pardon me?
You're saying one of the persons that stepped aside, Mr. Scheck, who resigned, he, he moved to Florida, is my understanding. I don't even know him outside of the airport authority.
No, what I'm saying is that the two nominees that you support, the two people that are currently on the board, in your capacity with the Fairhope Airport Authority, it may have been your consult with them that they could maybe gracefully step aside so that at least one of the mayor's appointments could have been approved this evening.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I couldn't disagree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I see what you're saying, ma'am.
Tony Prichet, Trentino. I'd just like to ask Mr. Burrell, you, you made the statement there when you were saying that the airport authority was set up to be non-political. If that is the case, is, how can the council member be on the board of authority and then have a vote? Because that is making it politics. You have the whole thing in your hands. You're a counselor, you're on the airport authority, it went three to two. So you made all the decisions, those really, when you think at it, are, was a political decision. And I think with respect, you should have recused yourself from voting on this because you're the one that has changed the balance from the council, and that is totally political. So if it was set up to be non-political, why are you on both? You should either not be on the council or not on the airport authority as voting for the replacements.
Well, Mr. Prichet, good question, and I'll address that. First of all, state statute, once again, gives the airport authority the ability to appoint a council member, and in fact, specifically precludes the mayor from serving on the airport authority. Basically says that they're to be given notice of the meetings and, but I don't think that I would be fulfilling my responsibilities that I was elected to do if I refused myself of a vote for being a member of the airport authority or being a member of the city council. I'm not going to neglect my duties, so I will go in and vote on there as I, as I have a right to do. And did I influence these council members? My God, I hope so, because I've been serving on that authority for about four years, and I probably have as much knowledge as anybody sitting at this table right now as to what's going on with the airport authority. So I hope that they listen to me because I have as much knowledge as anybody about what's going on, on the inside. So they should listen to me.
Yeah, no, and, and, you know, I applaud what you're doing, and I thank you for what you're doing, but I was not, like several people here, I was not going to speak tonight, but.
I probably have as much knowledge as anybody sitting at this table right now as to what's going on with the airport authority. So I hope that they listen to me, because I have as much knowledge as anybody about what's going on, on the inside. So they should listen to me.
Yeah, no, and, and, you know, I applaud what you're doing, and I thank you for what you're doing, but I was not, like several people here, I was not going to speak tonight, but you brought up this issue that the airport authority is supposed to be non-political.
Right.
But your position on both those things is making it political. That, that was my point. It's not a criticism of you.
Sure.
And I say you do a lot of work, you know, good work for the city, so I applaud all that you do. But you brought up the thing that the airport authority is supposed to be set up to be non-political, but when you look at it, with the, now, the way you have it set up, with you on both, on the council and the airport, you have made it political. So you've defeated, in, in essence, the whole purpose of setting up a non-political airport authority. Is that, is that not right?
State statute has done that. State statute has done that. So we're just fulfilling the, the state law.
Yeah, yeah, but you're making it now political. That's, that's the point. Now, if you, you, you're not either agreeing with me or disagreeing with me, I'd like your opinion. Is it not now political?
Mr. Pritchett, now.
Yeah, please.
On the law that sets up the airport authority, the state statute that allows it to exist.
Right.
It says that the airport authority will be run by a board of directors.
Mm-hmm.
It gives the number that can serve, and it tells that one of those members on that board will be a member of the city council. So what happens is the state statutes, every city that has an airport board, under Alabama law, under this section of Alabama law, will have a city councilman on the airport authority board. So what you're saying is true for every city, because the state laws set it up that way.
Right, yeah, and I, again, I said, I'm not disputing the legality of it all. I'm just responding to Counselor Burrell's statement that it's supposed to be set up to be non-political, but it obviously isn't.
Right. And what, what that means is that once the airport authority is set up under this state law, it is separated from the city. It's a separate and distinct entity.
Right.
It's not part of the city. It's a separate public corporation run by a board of directors, and it does not have to get involved in city finances or city politics. It's supposed to be a separate unit to operate for its own politics, like you said.
Okay. I rest my case. I've, I've made my statement. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, too, Mr. Pritchett.
Can we change our language to someone else? I asked you that. Should we say we're going to kick somebody off? Do people often say we're just, we're being willing to have an option, let other people serve? When you say you're going to kick somebody off, that's very negative. That's real negative.
Okay. You may be right.
And, and I want to switch back to something a little. I, I do think that what Jimmy proposed, or Councilman Conyers proposed, was, was a reasonable solution. I mean, I said, I said at the very beginning, I'm just, I'm just saying Jimmy was right, so I don't think you should applaud me for that. Jimmy was the one that said it. But, you know, but, but, which is why I voted for one of the new nominees and didn't vote for the other, and, and, and it's, it wasn't because I liked one more than the other. I truly don't know any of the candidates. You know, but again, you know, compromise can be good, and it can help things move forward, so I thought it was a good idea. I tried to go along with it. You know, and everybody's got their own vote, and that's the way this thing works. I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'd like to address this to our city attorney, Mr. Wynn. As you had spoke to the gentleman, okay, we established a part that, uh, the president of the city council is able to be on this board. Got that. But to you, on the record, Mr. Wynn, our city attorney, should he not be excusing himself when it comes into the municipality city to vote for, even though a volunteer person that where he has established himself to work beside these peoples? Now, I think as the gentleman also, back to you, Ms. Burrell, as the gentleman also was speaking, regardless whether it's law or not law, because the great love of your city and the fairness that you want the people that see you to be, would it not really be fair for you to say, you know what, I'm working down here, and even though I have the right, I'm going, hey, and my citizens don't want to see me doing, voting on these things while I'm, would it be too much? Would it be Christian-like? Because I, I think you're a Christian. Wouldn't it be Christian-like? Don't want to, we don't want to defend people, whether we have the right to or not. Come on, you're bigger than that. Come on. Thank you. Love you.
I'd like to answer your question. The answer to your question is no. As a city council person, he has a duty to act and work in city council matters, and as a member of the airport authority, he has a duty to work on the airport authority, and under state law, they are not conflicting, and he has a right and a duty to actively participate in votes.
Well, yeah, I think we need to, what we need to do, we can't change the law, but we can implement the law. So let's try the city council to come together, and let's take this part where we don't allow our councilmen to do such thing. We want you all to come together and vote on that.
Anyone else? Okay. Closed public participation. Thank you all for all of your comments. We'll now read a resolution to go into executive session. It says, "As City Attorney Marion E. Wynn, I hereby request the Fairhope City Council to go into executive session based on Section 36-25A-783 to discuss pending and potential litigation. City Attorney Wynn does hereby declare that the City Council of the City of Fairhope rise from a regular city council meeting on Thursday, March 9, 2017, to go into executive session. The City Council shall be in executive session. For approximately 30 minutes at the end of the executive session, the City Council shall return to the council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting. The time is 7:37, 7:38, let's call it. And I entertain a motion to go into executive session."
So moved.
That was second?
Second.
We need to roll call there, Clark?
No.
Okay.[1785.86]